Okay, welcome back from our lunch break. Next item is public hearing number two. Legislative public hearing to consider the adoption of comprehensive plan amendment CPA 20-02 Martinez-Cove Road. Maria Joz, that's interesting. Clyde, welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Clyde Doolin. I am the comprehensive planning administrator and I will be making the presentation on behalf of Ms. Joz today. What we have is a 2.3 acre site at the intersection of Grace Lane and Cove Road. I'll go to slide. The proposed change is from rural density residential, allowing one unit per two acres, to residential estate density, allowing two units per acre. As I said, it's a 2.3 acre site and the site currently contains a single-family residence and a guest house. This is the site outlined in blue. Oh, I'm sorry, I should introduce this a little bit more with a bit more information. This is a small-scale plan amendment. It is less than 10 acres. It has been reviewed by the local planning agency and they voted to approve. This is the one and only public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners. The site is outlined in teal here. And as you can see, here's Cove Road and Legacy Cove Communities on the north side. A Treasure Coast Classical Academy is to the west, as are two single-family residences. And to the south is the Samaritan House School. And to the east is a planned unit development that has been recently approved. I believe it's Cove Royale. This is the future land use map, showing the existing rural density and it's showing the residential estate density to the east, to the north, to the west. And the proposed density would have the same color, or the proposed change would have the same color on this site. Legacy Cove is a residential PUD to the north. As I said, Samaritan House is a private residential school to the south. To the east is land in the residential PUD Cove Royale and the Treasure Coast Classical Academy. Staff recommendation is for approval. The proposed designation is compatible with the neighboring parcels and their uses. It meets 13 out of 13 criteria for discouraging urban sprawl. It's met two of the four criteria staff needs to recommend approval of a future land use map amendment. And the area already contains the necessary infrastructure in terms of water, sewer, to serve any proposed development. It would essentially allow a maximum of four residential units on the property at some time in the future. And with that, I'll end the staff presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, Mr. Waters.
Good afternoon, Tyson Waters, excuse me. Tyson Waters, on behalf of the applicant. I have turned in my affidavit of mailing. No surprise, we agree and would ask you to accept staff's recommendation. As you can see, surrounding the property is the same land use that we're asking for. What my client is looking to do, he's actually looking to kind of create a family compound. We'll be able to get four units out of this. One will be for him, and then the other three will be for his three children. So this is the first step in allowing that to happen. And with that, I'm certainly here and willing to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment? I don't have any things. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate staff's effort and work on this. I do remember when this family came forward, when the Treasure Coast Classical Academy was looking at changing the use on their property and the Martinez's were very understanding and I believe good neighbors during that whole project. And with that, I would move staff's recommendation of approval.
Yes, second, sorry.
Oh, I couldn't tell.
It's the mask.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we have a quasi judicial public hearing regarding this same issue. Quasi judicial number one, or public hearing quasi judicial number one, public hearing to consider amendment, or amending the amendment of the Martin County zoning atlas to change the zoning district for CPA 20-02 Martinez-Cove. Mr. Doolin? Oh, wait a minute. Hold on a minute. You'd think after almost a year I'd get this right. Do we have any ex parte communications, Commissioner Smith?
If I do, they're filed.
Commissioner Hetherton?
If any, they've been filed.
I don't think I have any, but if I do, they've been filed. Commissioner Campy?
I don't have any.
I don't have any and that's been filed.
Okay, any return receipts to be turned in?
I believe that was covered with the, the-
Okay. It says on my-
Presentation, yes.
Okay, have you submitted a copy of the agenda item and your work history?
I have.
Are there any intervenors?
There are none.
All right, and with that, take it away.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have to swear.
Oh, yeah, I skipped a point. Everybody offering testimony, please stand and be sworn in.
Raise your red hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the same 2.3 acre parcel that we discussed in the last presentation. The proposed change in zoning is from A1 to RE 1/2A. The RE 1/2A zoning district requires minimum half-acre lots. This is the existing color on the map for A1. This is the proposed color that would go with the RE 1/2A on the zoning atlas. Staff recommends approval. The RE 1/2A implements the residential estate density, future land use designation.
Tyson Waters, again on behalf of the applicant. We agree with staff's recommendation. I keep looking over my shoulders. My clients were here all morning long, but haven't made it back from lunch yet. But again, we ask you to accept staff's recommendation and mention how wonderful I did in my presentation.
They probably look at it.
Yeah. All right, do we have any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Campy?
I have several pages of notes I'd like to grill the applicant on. Again, like the last time, I think that this is appropriate for the area. And I was actually going to vote no, but based on Mr. Waters' stellar comments and his fantastic presentation, he really swayed me and I will make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously, unanimously. Okay, if that leads us-
If you want to come back later and we'll do it again so they could see it, just let us know.
Okay. That leads us to public hearing number four, which is legislative public hearing to consider transmittal of comprehensive plan amendment 19-6 KL Waterside LLC, future land use amendment. Samantha, you're not Samantha either.
Sorry, no.
Okay, that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Clyde Doolin. I am the comprehensive planning administrator and I will be presenting this public hearing and the next public hearing regarding the text amendment on the same property. With your permission. This is a transmittal hearing. This is the second public hearing. The local planning agency considered this future land use map amendment and had a 2-2 vote. If the board chooses to approve for this amendment for transmittal, it will go off to the Department of Economic Opportunity and surrounding local governments and a number of state agencies for their comment. And it would come back to the Board of County Commissioners for final adoption, possibly this year, possibly next year. So the site is a 499 acre total parcel. And I'll go to the slides. That was not right. Let's try 422. This is the future land use designation on the subject site at the moment. I'll outline the area. This is 96th Street where my cursor is moving. This is Canor Highway, headed towards Indian Town as my cursor is moving. This is the St. Lucie Canal, shown in white. The area here where my cursor is moving is all inside the primary urban service district. The area shown in yellow and blue here is inside the primary urban service district. And the areas with the estate density residential, two units per acre, and these commercial designations at this intersection are all inside the primary urban service district. The green represents agricultural, allowing one unit per 20 acres. These land use designations for the commercial waterfront and the industrial were adopted by ordinances 876 and 8 in 2010 during the depths of the recession. The applicant is seeking to change these designations to agricultural in this area and put 250 acres of industrial in this area of the 499 acre site, effectively a swap of urban uses from the west side of the site to the east side of the site. And this area, as I said, would be agricultural again, so it would be a no-net change in the total agricultural area and a no-net change in the total urban area. That's the basics of this future land use map amendment in this public hearing. Staff finds ample reason to recommend approval. One of the major ones is that it would take the traffic off of 96th Street. Most of the, you know, this land, these land uses can only access 96th Street. They cannot access Canor Highway at present. So they would be entering the road at the base of the Arundel Bridge here. And any east traffic would be going past the residential areas through the school zone, because this is Crystal Lake Elementary, and into the intersection. In contrast, putting the urban uses over here on Canor Highway puts them in direct access to the area where Canor Highway has been widened to four lanes. And Canor Highway is a major arterial instead of the minor arterial that is 96th Street. Additionally, what we discovered, and we discussed this with the local planning agency extensively, is that when this land use was assigned and this commercial waterfront designation was assigned, they did not know that the Army Corps of Engineers held a 19 acre easement over this area of the property where it accesses the canal. And it actually reaches all the way around this black line up to 96th Street. So normally, there is a no-net loss policy on the commercial waterfront, future land use designation, but there are policies that allow it to be removed without an equal amount of commercial waterfront being replaced and created someplace else, where government regulation interferes with the use of the property. So staff's recommending approval of deleting the commercial waterfront from this site and the shift of the industrial 150 acres to the eastern portion of the site for a total of 250 acres on the eastern portion of the site. And that, there is no zoning to discuss here at this stage, because this is only the transmittal, so I won't go into all the complexities of the zoning. But that's the basics of the future land use map amendment. We find it complies with the criteria for staff to make a recommendation of approval and with the sprawl criteria. And it effectively did not cause a problem in our analysis of changes to the urban service district, because it's a no-net change in total acreage. And I'll go into more detail about the text amendment and the freestanding urban service district in the next presentation. But for now, I'll close with that. That concludes staff presentation.
Commissioner Hurd?
Yes, I'm looking at chapter 2.4.1 Conversion of Land. It's in policy 4.13A12. Says the proposed development shall not adversely impact the hydrology of the area or the productive capacity of adjacent farmlands. Not included in the amendment application. And there was no, staff's analysis was that there was no report attached? So how do you make a determination whether or not this is consistent if there was no data and analysis that was presented?
The-
It says no data and analysis was provided.
You are correct, Commissioner. The reason being, the entire site is used right now, the entire 499 acres is used for agricultural purposes. And the determination that some portion of this site was suitable for urban use was made back in 2010. That conversion was made then. The site is equally environmentally sensitive throughout. It's used entirely the same way throughout. So the impacts on agriculture would really be the same either way, whether the industrial occurs where it's shown here or where it's proposed here.
I just don't understand when there's data and analysis that's required to be submitted and none was submitted, that staff makes a recommendation that you don't need to, we don't need that information, even though it's required. I'm looking at changes to policy 4.1B2. And it says that there's a warehouse and distribution facility shall be allowed, a building footprint of up to 1 million 50,000 square feet. And F, that's E, and F is the warehouse and distribution facilities shall be allowed a maximum building height of 47 feet.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, what page is that you're looking at?
Well, I did all my review and my markings when this was, before it was continued. So it's, my pagination is not going to be the same as it was two weeks ago. So I can't, I can't tell you, except that it says it's part of policy 4.1B2, paren 2, D, E, F, and G.
Mr. Chair, I believe the questions are about the text amendment, which is the next public hearing, so-
It is, you're absolutely right, sorry.
If you would-
You're right.
Yeah, we'll take that up in our next hearing. Absolutely.
Let me see. And also, once again, I don't have, but you don't need a page for this. The criteria for future land use amendment, one, number C, is that the proposed change would correct what was otherwise, what would otherwise appear to be an inappropriately assigned land use designation. Why didn't you make the determination that industrial was an inappropriately assigned land use designation?
The Board of County Commissioners already made the determination that 175 acres of industrial was appropriate at this location.
I don't think that's relevant. I think that it's staff's responsibility to look at what's compatible, what's surrounding, and determine whether or not that was an inappropriately assigned land use. It's an urban enclave, it's wholly outside of the urban service boundary. It's a freestanding urban service boundary. There are no industrial uses adjacent. And you're going to put a million-square-foot warehouse there?
If I may, section 2.1 of the staff report quotes from the comprehensive plan. It states, "In evaluating each future land use map amendment request or a text amendment which changes an allowable use for a specific parcel, staff begins with the assumption that the future land use map as amended is generally an accurate representation of the intent of the Board of County Commissioners and thus the community. We assumed that the existing industrial is a reflection of the Board of County Commissioners' intent."
Thank you.
Commissioner Campy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Doolin, you just mentioned it there and just reading some of the verbiage from some county documents, but I think the question, if I were to answer Commissioner Hurd's question, I would disagree that it's not staff's responsibility or job to decide if you thought it was an appropriate land use, because we did that in 2010. This, to me, is pretty cut and dry for a, basically a swap of these designations from a specific portion of a larger piece of property to a different piece. And so the question would be like, why would we be doing that? It's basically, from a size point of view, pretty equal. And I do remember the situation, I was on the board at the time, where the applicant was very excited for the opportunity to have that access to the waterfront and they had a vision of, if I remember correctly, marine industry kind of business, which we do like here in Martin County. And I remember hearing after the fact that the Army Corps of Engineers had an easement that basically blocked them from doing that and that their whole vision of why they would have structured the uses on their much larger piece of property would have worked out that way. So when I heard about this swap, I thought it's actually an advantage. You know, we're not in the business, at least I'm not, in the business of punishing landowners, punishing applicants, inhibiting their opportunity to utilize their property or to make money on their property. I wouldn't do that if it detrimentally affects existing residents. This, to me, is an advantage, because you had mentioned it, that on 96th Street, and it's hard to really see it in that picture, but the northern portion of the property is where this, these configurations of these uses would have had to enter and exit the property basically across the street from St. Lucie Falls and some other residential neighborhoods. And then if you assume that an industrial property would have tractor-trailer trucks and 18-wheelers and other commercial vehicles that would come to this area of our community from 95 or the Turnpike, they would come on Canor Highway north of this map. They would be heading west on Canor. They would make a right turn onto 96th Street. They would pass Crystal Lake Elementary School entrance. On any school day, there might be car lines there. They would have to pass all of these residential neighborhoods and then turn onto the property, which is not ideal. Now, by basically flip-flopping the same amount of square, let's call it acres, from where they were to where they're currently going, I personally think that's a much better configuration of industrial property. Now they're on Canor Highway, which is a much more appropriate road for vehicular truck traffic and just traffic in general. They'd be able to enter directly onto the property. If you look around, even just on this map, you can see, other than the Ag Ranchet to the north, I believe that is the orientation, that area right there where your cursor is. Obviously, I think the applicant and the future date would have to figure out how they would place facilities on that property to have the least impact on those Ranchet properties. Other than that, it seems to work for me. Staff's given it a recommendation of approval, because, like I said in the beginning of my comments, it's not your position to decide what should be there. It's ours and we've already determined that. So for staff to look at what we've put there and sort of rearrange the layout, I think it works. And barring information from my colleagues and public comment, I would accept staff's recommendation for that change. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Crady, you're up.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Morris Crady, Senior Vice President with La Ceda &amp; Associates and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, been working in this area for about 30 years. And for the record, I did turn in the return receipts at the local planning agency meeting. If possible, Clyde, I'd like to take control and go through my PowerPoint, just to clarify my request and to kind of address some of the comments. Do you want to operate or can I sit there as long as you disinfect everything and here? Let me- Okay. And, you know, my presentation will be just once and I will talk a little bit about the text, because it is related, but I do want to clarify exactly what we're doing. This is the property, you can see, one of the things I like about the property with the background environmental science is that it's totally free of any native wetland or upland habitat. It's been farmed for decades. And there are no surrounding established residential neighborhood, which is another good feature, which is hard to find anywhere in Martin County. So, you know, this is 150 acre vacant tract. We've talked to all of the, just about all the residents in this area and none of them object to moving the industrial to the highway versus 96th Street. And just to be clear, you know, this is what's currently allowed. And it's 175 acres of industrial and 75 acres of waterfront commercial that wraps around an existing waterfront commercial parcel here that I think the county approved for some type of site plan for a marina or a boat building facility there. So we're just simply taking that from the 96th Street frontage and moving it over here and it's based on a couple of reasons, marketing and planning, but also what we discovered, and I didn't work on the project in 2010, I started evaluating the project site about three years ago, working with the owners to try to find a user for the waterfront commercial and the industrial parcels. And what we discovered through our research is that the Army Corps of Engineers has a perpetual easement. And I'm not sure why they even call it an easement, because it's really their property and we can't use it. And we even confirmed that it totally affects our ability to access the waterfront. They not only encumber all of the waterfront, we have about 200 feet here, but also they have access on the 96th Street. So they can, they can use this site for dredging, for fill material, for construction staging, they can do whatever they want and they have a right to access 96th Street. So this is, this is how it looks on the land use map. And again, we're not affecting the existing marine waterfront commercial site, but the Corps and the future will eventually have some type of use there. And so, you know, this goes back to the 1950s, I think, when there was a final judgment by the Corps. And during our research, we actually contacted the Corps, but just so I can, I kind of reprinted this, so you can read it, the highlight of portion actually says, "The Corps has the perpetual right, power, and privilege to enter upon, excavate, cut away, and remove any or all of the land as may be required for the improvement and maintenance of the St. Lucie Canal or any enlargement thereof. And the further right to enter upon and occupy and use any portion of said land for the positive dredge material for the construction and maintenance of levees and for other purposes as may be needful and the preservation and maintenance of the St. Lucie Canal." Well, that was an old document, so again, we researched it further and persisted for a determination by the Corps. And so we did get a determination in August of 2019. And again, I won't make you read that, I retyped it and I underlined the portions that are most with emphasis. And just, this is their response. "The Corps does not release or terminate perpetual right-of-way easements or interest, et cetera. These easements grant the government the perpetual right to enter upon, excavate, cut away, and remove any and all of the tract of land required at any time for the construction and maintenance of the waterway. Any development on the easement area would interfere with the government's rights granted in the easement." You know, in most cases along the Corps or the St. Lucie Canal, there is a Corps easement that's linear, that runs linear to the site. And you can get a permit to build things in there, because the Corps basically doesn't need that, but that's not the case here. They're basically telling us that you can't do anything within this easement. So again, I don't know why they don't own it outright, because it did cause confusion in 2010. And there's no user that's willing to take the risk of building anything within this easement, because they have the right to remove it and do whatever they want with it. So the Marines, the policy in the county comprehensive plan that attempts to eliminate- So the Marines, the policy in the county comprehensive plan that attempts to eliminate or create no net loss of marine service areas, which this was designated as, is Section E. in Policy 4.1388. And it says specifically that you can reduce the waterfront commercial land use when a particular parcel of land in marine service area cannot be reasonably developed or redeveloped due to government regulations related to marine service areas. So that gives the county a mechanism to allow the reduction in the marine waterfront commercial use. And there's also the Section 1.11C2 of the comprehensive plan that the proposed change would correct what would otherwise appear to be an inappropriately assigned land use designation. So this would correct that. And again, it would, it would, let's see, just so you know, on the property now, there are current restrictions on the property. Let's see, I thought I had an existing, let me go back. Is that there is the existing policy, well, let me just go over this. And this is the proposed policy that staff's recommending and that we're agreeing with that's regarding the uses on the property. We're not changing criteria A, that requires that no residential uses shall be permitted on the property. That's not being changed. And it also says on, and we're not changing Section B, which says we have to be consistent with the land use designations per the comprehensive plan. The existing Section C. in the text allows for development up to 1.6 million square feet in a building or multiple buildings. The staff asked us to change that so they could better track the impact using trips. So we were okay with leaving the reference to 1.6 million square feet of allowable non-residential use within that 250 acres. But staff, you know, preferred to have it tied to a certain number of trips so they could better control the development on the property. So we agreed with staff in making that change. Then D. is that we're not changing that. We're leaving the requirement that any future development on the property be developed as a planned unit development that give the county the ability to fully evaluate what we're proposing and also allow some flexibility for the developer. Now, and we're putting Section E., this was previously a criteria that was pertaining to waterfront commercial uses. Now, by taking out this Section C. that referenced buildings up to 1.6 million square feet, we didn't want to lose the ability to construct a building at a million square feet. And most of the warehouse and distribution facilities that we've been working with in the e-commerce trade are looking at 500 to a million square feet. So we wanted to keep that reference to a footprint of a million square feet within the criteria. And that's, again, that's already in the existing language. It already says that we can build buildings and/or a building up to 1.6 million square feet, but we're actually reducing it to 1 million square feet. And then the last thing that we're adding is, based on our conversations with the people on 96th Street, we're making it very clear by adding a criteria that requires that we'll have no access to southwest 96th Street unless it's restricted to provide for emergency purposes only, and that will be entirely up to the county if they wanted to have an access off of 96th Street. But all of our uses are intended to be off of Canter Highway and that's based on our conversations with various industries, not just e-commerce, but also medical facilities. We've talked to data centers. A prerequisite for all of these targeted industries, by the way, is that they have this frontage on Canter Highway to access the utilities and the internet that's available on, within the right-of-way. And it also actually moves the project closer to existing water and sewer facilities that Martin County controls at the intersection of Canter Highway and 96th Street. So we'll be extending those water and sewer facilities to accommodate these industries. And that service will be provided by Martin County. We've met with the Martin County Utilities Department. They have adequate capacity and infrastructure to service the site, just like they have in its current configuration. And so our intent is to move forward and continue to try to attract industry to this area and provide job opportunities and a greater tax base. But that is all we're asking today and with that, I'll defer to, any questions?
Any questions for the applicant?
Hi.
Commissioner Heatherington.
I like the idea of moving the industrial to Canter Highway where there's a little bit more access and it seems that, I hear quite a few complaints already at the same time, but Mr. Crady or Clyde, could you go back to, I think it's the first or second slide that you put up with the two maps side by side? There was just a little cutout and I, see, on the left, is that that little rounded piece of property, is that not part of this? It's inside the urban services, but it's not part of this property?
The area in green here is inside the ownership of the property, outside of the primary urban service district and has an agricultural future land use designation on it. And the history on that is, the reason that they carved that circular look on it is there is a Martin County public water well for public potable water located over here along 96th Street. And if you make a circle, drawing a circle of the well field protection zone around it, that little circular part right there is part of, is just outside the, they did that to exclude this part of it. So this, there would be no industrial inside the well field protection area.
Okay, great. I wasn't here in 2010, so I wasn't familiar and it just looked like it was left out in some way. Thank you, that's all.
Commissioner.
Yeah, Mr. Crady mentioned that there were no objections from neighbors and these are a partial list of the objections of neighbors.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the neighbors that contacted me directly, I probably spoke to about 15 or 20 of them, they had no objections.
I just wanted to make clear for the record that this is a stack that I received this morning and all of the people but one are opposed and they all appear to be neighbors. Mr. Doolin, would you go back to the former slide and use your cursor and, just, the, use your cursor and outline on the project the boundaries of the primary and the secondary urban service boundary?
So the primary follows the yellow and the blue as you see it here. Basically, the future land use designation matches where the primary is, right there. The green is outside the primary. That is all agricultural. This Ag Ranchette is outside the primary. The primary runs along here where the coral color meets the brown. The primary runs there. The primary runs along 96th Street here to this point, going this, sorry, go ahead.
So in this, in this one, the agricultural portion of this L. is wholly outside of any urban boundary?
You're speaking within the project site, within the 499 acres?
Yes.
Yes. This is outside the primary urban service district.
Okay. Now, on that map, trace the boundaries of the primary urban service boundary.
As proposed, the primary urban service district will go here, here, run down 96th Street to there, there, and up and over here to this point. This, as proposed in the next board item, is a, would be a freestanding industrial urban service district outside of the primary or the secondary. The other examples of that are the Seven Jays property out by the landfill and the Ag Tech property.
Yeah. I know that those were created and they were supposed to be non precedent setting. And I know that we don't like to comprehensive plan, we don't like to plan by exception, and yet it seems that more and more and more in the last couple of months that we do change the comprehensive plan by exception. The exceptions lists are getting to be really long. Yeah, I remember the arguments for Ag Tech, which didn't hold water at the time and they certainly don't now because they're, as they're being used to create, because that's a precedent. It was, it was used then, so therefore that would be an applicable use again.
So, Mr. Doolin, this is plainly obvious, but for some reason I feel it needs to, the uses that can be done on the existing property, the way it's, the urban service boundary and the way it's owned and everything that it is now, all we're asking is for us to switch that over to this new piece in the front.
Correct.
Which you would think that all of us would want to diminish the traffic that would run in front of a elementary school and through a residential neighborhood. That's the benefit that the community, I would think, that anybody that is thinking about semis coming into an industrial situation, you would not want, right? So we're benefiting from that.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay. So, yes, it's a freestanding urban service district, but that's just the geographic conditions that we're dealing with. So, I mean, they can do what they can do now, right? But it would be better for everybody if they could do it in a different spot. I mean, let's get down to the, right? So, okay. Any other questions for staff or Mr. Crady?
We have one speaker, Marty Perry. Do you want to speak to this item or the text amendment item?
This item.
This item, okay.
Get this down to my level. Good afternoon. My name is Marty Perry. I'm here representing Robert Kenna. I handed out an aerial map to each of you earlier and on this aerial, the area outlined in green is Mr. Kenna's 1,215 acres. Basically, he owns all of the land pretty much surrounding the proposed 250-acre parcel on three sides, from the southeast going around to the south and to the southwest. And his objection primarily is related to just the advance and encroachment of urbanization and industrial urbanization at that, in that, closer to his operation, which is primarily agricultural and his goal is to keep it agricultural for now and for the distant future. He had objections to the industrial that you currently have that you're trying to replace with this other parcel. And the thought that I would leave with you is that, and just by way of background, I'm a, been practicing land use law and been involved in land use planning for over 50 years now, having started out by serving two years as a Palm Beach County zoning attorney in the early 70s. But I've seen progressions of this nature for a long period of time, dating back to when Palm Beach County was only 250,000 people. And you all know how big it is today. And the reality is, is that this type of use is something that emerged even before the virus. It's gotten much stronger and more intense since the virus. I think what you see here, and it's been acknowledged by the consultants and also by the gentleman that made the presentation on behalf of the petitioner, that a single user can occupy this. So you're really looking at something that is immediately developable. At most, you're looking at maybe two or three users. These distribution centers take up a lot of traffic. They're talking about limiting this to 950 peak hour morning trips. You should understand that that translates to 9,500 average daily trips. So we're not talking about an inconsequential number of trips here. My concern, one I think that you all should be concerned with, is that if you look at the overall picture here, basically what you have is a triangle there that runs down from the north. And the ultimate development of that triangle is a very real possibility here in the not too distant future because there's going to be continuous tremendous pressure put upon Martin County to relax their growth standards. And Martin County has, to my knowledge, for the past decades, has been very strong in terms of urging not only smart but controlled growth. And this is creating the opportunity for the expansion and the filling out of that entire triangle, which is probably about five times the 250 acres that we're talking about here. So if that's something that you're really promoting, that's going to happen.
Sir, your time's up.
Thank you very much.
Mike, do you have anybody?
Okay. Any other comments, any other anything?
I have a motion.
You do?
Yeah.
How'd I miss that? What was your motion?
I didn't hear anything there.
Okay, did we have a second?
I'll second it. I didn't hear the motion.
Commissioner Smith, I'm sorry, I completely missed, which is kind of weird with you barking in my ear all the time. Mr. Smith.
I'm called Pearls, not Bar.
Oh, Pearls, yeah. Go ahead.
You ready?
Yeah.
Thank you. It's more of a general comment and how we get where we get sometimes. As I recall, when we did this, and Morris, your timeline, I think, was that we were in the recession or we were heading into the recession and things weren't going well and all of us were looking for ideas as to how we could jumpstart something, anything, to kind of get us back out of the pit that we had entered into with the recession. And the idea behind when we first created, I think, and Morris, correct me if I'm wrong, was that because the marine industries is one of those businesses that we really do value and put a high level of attention to because it's one of the things we do really well in Martin County, the idea was to expand or to give that the opportunity on the canal to an industrial use that otherwise wouldn't maybe work so well in someplace else. And so the creation of this in the first place, it was somewhat controversial in terms of doing it, but it was at a time when we were trying to make decisions based upon how could we further advance Martin County out of the recession and how could we create additional industrial activity opportunities? And this was an ideal location relative, I think, to the expansion of that. Well, in my mind, two things have occurred. One, that never happened, so we didn't build out a new waterfront industrial area, which we had all hoped would happen. Two, time has changed a lot in terms of what's happened since then. And so now, the idea is that, okay, if that wasn't a viable location or that wasn't a, something that the industry was looking for, is there something now, given the economy, given what's occurring, that we can do to take advantage of the same general location but also the same type of use? So my one thought is, I think what they're asking to do is a reasonable thing to do. The second part of that will probably come in the next agenda item when we start talking about how do we focus and what do we want to happen and where we want to happen. And do we, as Martin County, and I think even as the attorney spoke, you know, are we prepared and are we thinking through the future far enough out to really understand where we want things to happen and how we want them to happen? So I just only wanted to throw in a little bit of the comment about how we got here and maybe what the interesting opportunity is. But certainly in the next conversation, I think there's a lot of room for discussion in terms of we, as Martin County, collectively, all over Martin County, how do we better plan and think about where we go in the future? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have nothing else. We have a motion by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries with Commissioner, four to one, Commissioner Hurd dissenting. Moving on to public hearing number five, legislative public hearing to consider transmittal of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 19-5, Kale Waterside LLC, a text amendment, and this has been continued from October 13th. Mr. Doolin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to go to the second supplemental memo. There was a earlier supplemental to the October 13 meeting. There's been a number of changes back and forth between the applicant and staff. They've all been basically text changes to fine tune the specifics. There are a number of policies being changed and so I'm going to go into an overview so that as to outline as opposed to get lost in the details here. So, 673, I don't know. So here's a PowerPoint. So, here's a PowerPoint for this today. The text changes involve the creation of a freestanding urban service district and the contraction of the existing primary urban service district. It requires amending Chapter 4 and amending the figure 4-2, which shows our urban service districts. It requires amending 11-1, which is in Chapter 11, and that's the areas currently served by regional utilities, and requires amending 11-2, potential service areas served by regional utilities. This is an excerpt of figure 4-2 showing our primary and secondary. The primary is in this pink color. Secondary is in this lavender. The subject site is outlined in red. The existing primary urban service district that I outlined earlier is shown here. And this is where the freestanding urban service district is proposed and would be shown on figure 4-2, and as you can see, the pink is gone from this area of the site in the proposed change. That's to match the future land use designations discussed in the last presentation. This is figure 11-1. It needs to be updated. It's not even showing this area, but it would be updated as thus, to show the freestanding urban service district outlined in blue right there. Here's the potential service areas, figure 11-2. These are already figures in our comprehensive growth management plan. The area outlined in blue here is served by Martin County Utilities. The area outlined in red is served by South Martin Regional Utilities, consistent with all of our agreements. Here's the proposed change to figure 11-2, which show outlined in blue, to be served by Martin County Utilities, this freestanding industrial urban service district. Then text changes. Policy 4.13A10 describes the industrial future land use designation and already recognizes two other freestanding urban service districts for industrial development. This would be added to recognize this 250 acres of the 499-acre site. That's part of the fine tuning that we've been working with the applicant on, is to make sure we're describing the 250 acres and not the 499. We reviewed the eight criteria that are necessary for any alteration of the primary urban service district, whether that be expansion, contraction, or just changing it. We found it consistent with those eight criteria. As we discussed in the future land use, it's a no-net change in urban service district and in industrial area or in, I should say, urban areas, and no change in agricultural. So, now, these three policies right here are all policies that describe the extension of water and sewer service to a property outside the primary urban service district. The same exact piece of text is proposed for all three of them. You may see it in different places throughout a document, but the same text is proposed for all three, and it's just for internal consistency so that the property can receive water and sewer. And then there are subarea policies. Policy 4.1B2 contains subarea policies for specific parcels around Martin County. They were imposed to where a concern was for too much, where a proposed future land use change or development would exceed the available public facilities. And so, as Mr. Crady identified in his presentation, there were certain subarea policies that were adopted specific to this property back in 2010. And what I'll go over next is the changes that would be made to them. They are all site-specific. The industrial development described in an ordinance that would have to be adopted at a future date would be listed here so that it would be specific to the 250 acres of industrial, and it would be restricted as managed as follows in A, B, C, et cetera. As Mr. Crady said, this is the existing text of the plan. Uses on the subject site shall be limited to non-residential. Residential shall not be permitted. Uses on the property shall be consistent with the future land use. That's an existing policy. No changes proposed to it, and it's specific to this site. Subsection C, as Mr. Crady outlined, staff recommends the use of trips as opposed to 1.6 million square feet. You could have a wide variety of uses in 1.6 million square feet. Some of them would be generating a great many trips. Some of them would generate a very few trips. We feel trip cap is a more measurable and more identifiable means of doing this. We did work extensively with the engineering, I'm sorry, the public works staff and with the applicant to come up with that number. No change proposed to this. A planned unit development would be required, and our plan policies do suggest that industrial development be done via PUD so as to provide control and buffering and minimize impacts on surrounding property owners. So, that's consistent with other policies in the plan. This is the existing plan language that you see stricken. Maximum densities of all uses contained with a building or buildings shall not exceed 500,000 square feet, and that was all set for dates and times because of the need to limit the impact on the roads as development were to occur. As you can see, that's a bit dated to reference December 15, December 2015, and so instead, the applicant's proposed a million and 50,000 square feet. That does not limit this 250 acres of industrial to just a million and 50,000 square feet. It's limiting the warehouse and distribution facility uses on the property to a million and 50,000 square feet. The rest of the 250 acres could be used for other industrial purposes, and that's why that trip cap mentioned earlier is so very important, because it applies to the entire 250 acres. This is a proposed change that the applicant was making. As you can see from his presentation, Mr. Crady did not include this, and so I take it, that's no longer requested by the applicant. Staff is, was not recommending approval of this proposed change that addressed building height. As you can see, staff cannot recommend approval of subsection F, and that would be a substantial policy change. Subsection G is the same thing Mr. Crady showed in his presentation. No final site plan shall be approved, which provides access to Southwest 96th Street from that portion of the property designated as industrial on the future land use map, unless it's restricted for emergency access purposes. So, in short, staff recommends approval of the proposed changes to the text shown here in this slide presentation, and of course, we do not recommend subsection F that had been proposed earlier, and I believe if I am correct, Mr. Crady no longer is requesting. I'll be happy to answer any questions or go back over anything you'd like, but that concludes staff presentation.
Commissioner Hurd.
Yes, isn't, isn't, one of the, aren't a couple of the primary purposes of a primary urban service boundary is to prevent urban sprawl and also because urban services are so expensive to provide, to provide them, to contain them in a smaller geographic area?
That's correct.
Then, how can you justify a freestanding urban service boundary that is in complete denial of those very, very basic planning principles?
Well, first of all, the plan policy provides for the industrial freestanding urban service district. And second of all, if we look at the urban service district map right here, you see this peninsula of primary urban service district extending down almost to the south line of this 450-acre property. So, as it stands right now, the plan policies permit this entire 250 acres here where my cursor is to receive water and sewer and for the water and sewer to be extended to that property. It's relatively the same distance to go from a 250-acre area here to the intersection of Canor Highway and Pratt Whitney. So, it's an equal amount of freestanding for the contraction of the primary, and it's a similar distance from the existing utility lines.
And now, if this flip is approved, water and sewer will be extended from the terminus of the existing primary urban service boundary wholly outside the urban service boundary to this parcel?
That's correct.
I presume that there was some sort of analysis done to determine that a building footprint of a million, 50,000 square feet is compatible with neighboring uses? Tell me where the closest million-square-foot building is in, outside the urban service boundary?
I can't point to one.
Because there isn't one?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Mr. Crady?
Again, for the record, Morris Crady, I'm just confirming that we do agree with staff recommendation.
Move to deny.
Krista, are you?
Excuse me, I was going to, Krista Story. Just to confirm, so Clyde, as part of your summary, you indicated that staff, if the board is considering transmitting this, we do want the ability to tweak the language, that the exact language that's proposed, we think in terms of reference to the legal description and stuff, would need some, I believe, need some editing. So, if substantially, the board's fine with that, then it needs some editing there, and that was indicated in the supplemental memo.
Is that Mike?
If you had said that, maybe I missed it.
No, I did not, and thank you for pointing it out. What Ms. Story is referring to is in numerous, in two or three places, it says the industrial development described in the ordinance, which would be adopted as part of the future land use map amendment, within the tract of real property described in the warranty deed, recorded in OR book, et cetera, et cetera. Once an ordinance is adopted and we insert a number, an ordinance number here with a legal description attached to that ordinance, we'll know exactly where and be able to reproduce and describe exactly where the industrial development is located. And so, this other text that talks about the real tract of property and the warranty deed, et cetera, will not be necessary. It will be superfluous. And so, at adoption, when we come back to you, assuming the board transmits this, this would be edited, but it's really just a clarification of text. It's not a change in policy or a change in intent at all.
Commissioner Hurd.
Yeah, where is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment text change that will allow for the provision of water and sewer outside the urban service boundary?
I'll be happy to show you in the language attached to the second supplemental memo from the applicant.
Thought it was closer. Where is my supplemental 573? It's sideways.
Rotate, go down.
Go down.
Go down. No, go back where you were.
So, there's the supplemental. These are the text sections that are referenced, but as I was just showing, it's, I'll have to rotate this.
Go up to view, or yeah, either one. Keep going. Do it another time. One more.
That's not going to be, error is what I want.
Of course, the Rust Agenda will be upside down.
Yes, I'll have to reverse this after I'm done. Thank you. You're correct. So, policy 4.1B2, my slide presentation had excerpts of. There's subsection 2, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, that we were talking about. The 4.13A10 deals with the freestanding urban service district. That's the reference to the specific parcel. Then these other parcels, these other subsections I mentioned, 4.7A3, exceptions to the location of the primary urban service district, has a list of exceptions. This one would be number nine added to the list. Another policy that also lists some of the same exceptions, or a little difference, is Again, the same piece of text, the tract of real property designated as industrial, both in nine above and in three here, same text used. And then 4.7A14, allowable development outside the primary urban service district, lists a series of parcels, including the AgTech parcel here, the county landfill, facilities at JD State Park, the Seven Jays industrial area, et cetera, and this would be added to that list.
Does a comprehensive plan require, a comprehensive plan require that parcels within the urban service boundaries receive services first?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Campy.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is obviously, sort of goes hand in hand with our last agenda item. Like I said earlier, back in 2010, when this was being discussed, as Commissioner Smith mentioned, we were in the, we didn't realize it at the time, but history tells us, we were in the depths of a, what they're now calling the Great Recession. And, you know, there's a lot of talk about economic development, and we spend a lot of time and money with our business development board and our economic council and our chambers trying to diversify our tax base, because without the diversification of a tax base, then any of the necessary services and the services that our residents want, they fall on the residents to pay for or the small business owners to pay for. And I don't know how many small businesses and retail shops can give us the impact towards our responsibilities for economic development that something like this could. As the applicant had presented, there's not a lot of neighbors immediately adjacent to this, and it's rare. When we did this, that was a decade ago, so I think that speaks to that, yes, this is not Palm Beach County, this is Martin County. A decade has transpired. We tried at the time to assist a landowner in revamping those. At that point, as you can see there, it said formerly known as the Neal property. The Neils were farmers, and they were farming, actively farming that property, and as that became more and more difficult to do, they started to continue to support and invest in our community, and I thought at the time, and I still do, that it's the least we could be doing as a commission is to share in that economic development responsibility by creating an atmosphere where bringing business is appropriate. Now, I know that there was an article in the newspaper and there's some emails that had been circulating around about the 47-foot height limit and things like that. Now, the applicant is not bringing that forward as part of today's conversation, so although it might have been in the paperwork from a couple of weeks ago, I would guess that the reason it was pulled then is because there wasn't really an appetite for 47-foot finished height at the time. But these distribution centers are basically the, not even a thing of the future. They're currently sort of the appropriate, you know, sort of the darling of economic development, because as things, especially with the pandemic, as things switch much more to e-commerce, regional distribution centers are what these big corporations are looking for. It's been publicly announced that they're building already to our neighboring county to the north. It's been publicly announced that they're building to our neighborhood county to the south, and then, look, I get it, we like the fact that we are different here, but if we deny or make it difficult for every single opportunity to come our way to pass us by, then south and north of us will continue to eat our lunch, and I'm not saying that we should look like either one of those places. It's not like we're looking at a stack of applications to discuss and do this. We debated this project, and Commissioner Hurd is consistent in her opinion. She did not like the project then, which I completely understand, and that's obviously her prerogative. But in the last decade, we haven't accomplished anything on the site. They've come up with another opportunity. They've come up with another opportunity, basically apples for apples, switching it to an advantage. We're not discussing specifically a business opportunity at this point, but I feel that it's, from my perspective, it sends a message to property owners and to potential business entities that would look to invest in our community, that it's not going to be an easy journey, but at least it could be a journey. The door is not nailed closed to economic development. Whatever they come up with there will be an opportunity for our residents to work at, it'll add to our tax base. And I keep hearing the, the comparison to AgTech. Again, AgTech, northern portion of the county, west of Palm City, not directly on top of any other residential, existing residential developments. And they've been trying as hard as they could to bring economic opportunities and jobs and diversification of our base to Martin County, and it's a struggle. And I don't mind that it's a struggle, but it shouldn't be impossible. I would make a motion to accept staff's.
We have a motion already.
Oh, we do already?
Yep.
See that? Do you need a second?
That's Commissioner Hurd's motion to deny.
Oh, well, I will make a substitute motion to accept staff's recommendation of approval.
Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, what I object to is throwing out careful planning, incremental planning, accountable planning, in favor of amending the comprehensive plan on a case-by-case basis through exceptions. It's a poor strategy for long-term sustainability. And that's what we're doing here, is, is carving out exception after exception after exception. This is a big one. And it's going to, it's going to set a precedent in this part of the county from which we will not be able to turn.
Mr. Chair, may I respond? That was a rhetorical question. Careful planning, as I mentioned, we've been at this for a decade, and I'm sure that when this was originally approved in 2010, it was worked around for a couple of years prior. So a dozen years of trying to create an opportunity on this property, I don't think could be characterized as, as knee-jerk planning. The other concept, and I don't disagree with Commissioner Hurd's concept of where it looks like we're just sort of picking and choosing piecemeal. In Martin County, that's almost the only way we could potentially do it, to create a much broader expansion of the primary or secondary urban service boundary, purely as speculative on what potentially might come to these areas, doesn't address the fact that someone is a landowner. When we were talking about the, the potential height, that the finished height of a distribution center, there's industry standards. And we could have made the argument that, well, maybe this would have worked more in the Village of Indian Town, or City of Stewart, or somewhere else. But we are addressing a specific applicant who is a landowner, and I would guess, Mr. Doolan, maybe you could tell me without the exact numbers, this is not an inexpensive process that the applicant has been going through, correct?
Correct.
And I'm sure Mr. Cready would say, that I know he's a generous guy, but I'm pretty sure he's not volunteering his, his time and services. So we, I don't, I don't villain, villainize the applicant in this process for making another attempt to try to utilize her property that's been purchased and paid taxes on in our county for decades, to try to do something that will benefit all of us. It should be careful and, and considerate and thoughtful, but a dozen years at it is, is not slapstick. Thank you.
Okay, it's been so long. Did I ask for a public comment? Do we have anybody in the room to? No? Mr. Merger? Okay. All right. Looking for a second to miss, to.
Oh, now you want me to talk?
I want you to do anything. Get silence here. Go for it, please.
So a second for, for the discussion.
You want further discussion?
I do.
Okay. You want to talk, then put your light on. Go for it, please.
I want this look, that's the one I.
I'm, I'm, Ben there.
That's the one when I know I'm done and there should be no more. The comments I made before and, on a prior agenda item, really were to move into this conversation. You know, one thing I, I think that we as a county need to decide, where and how do we want things to happen, and in what timeline do we want them to happen, and how aggressive are we as a county going to be to further see that happen? You know, we did that with AgTech, and we took a, a big jump with AgTech to see if there was something out there that made sense. And again, that was back in a time when we were looking for options to do things that would hopefully drag us out of where we were. You know, again, going back to the marine industries discussion, if that is one of the primary industries that we want to be in the business of, of Martin County being in, I think we, economic development-wise, need to step up and take a much more proactive stance than we take. If we want to be in the energy industry, we had a fantastic opportunity seven years ago or so at this point to bring EcoGen to our community and have an additional power company out west, and we completely botched that up and messed that up, and they went away. We are in the medical industry. We, we have our great partners at Cleveland Clinic Martin Health, and we do a lot in the medical end of things. We are in the energy business, like I said before. And so we're in the marine, marine industries, we're in the aviation industry, aerospace industry. And if those are the things that we are good at, and we have for decades had employees and employers focus on Martin County because of the depth at which we do those things, I'm sorry, Harold, we're also really good at landscaping, then that's how we should, we should look to the future to, to say, okay, how do we want to make sure and provide comprehensive plan amendments, comprehensive language, that puts us in that position, and really steps us up to say, you know, we had an opportunity with this parcel to really see some interesting marine industries development, and that just didn't happen. Some years back, one of the Carolinas, I forget if it's south or north, decided they wanted to be in the marine industries business. They created an economic development strategy to steal everybody's marine boat builder businesses that existed. They went to the university system, they put up a university campus, and they designed a program around, if you build boats and you need technical assistance, you need people assistance, you need staffing, we as a state and we as a, as a region will make that happen, whatever it takes us to get there. And so I think it's time for Martin County, hopefully, to decide and look to that same sort of strategy. We need to decide where we want to go and how we want to get here. This parcel is an interesting parcel because of its location proximity to I-95. One of the reasons why this site is being looked at favorably is because of its distance. During the MPO meeting, I brought up the discussion for a very specific reason, because this agenda item was coming to us as relative to our truck hauling routes and the map that we had, that was presented to us from our consultants at the MPO. All of those long-range thinking things we need to be considering, because we've already recognized, the applicant has already recognized, the staff has recognized, we do not want to dump anything onto 96th Street, which is a really good idea, because for all of you who've been out on 96th Street, it is not a, it is not a large road, it is a small, somewhat, I would call it rural road, if you will. It is not designed to handle the capacity of adding a huge industrial site to, so rightfully so, the applicant has looked at, how do we move this property out to Canor Highway, and how do we position itself better? But there are other things that will come with this that we absolutely have to consider and think about in the future, as to how we manage this site and its moving, moving forward. So it's a great opportunity for Martin County, but I think cautiously we have to move forward and understand how we think for all of the other things that we want to do in Martin County, how we do that and what best ways there are to get there. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other comments? We have a motion by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one. Commissioner Hurd dissenting. We're going to take our three o'clock break five minutes early, and when we come back, we're going to take Ms. Coraz's TRA.
So, should we, when you come back, should we do the?
So, should we come back to the...
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Susan Corres, Manager, Office of Community Development. As you all know, each CRA area has its own community redevelopment plan, and that plan directs the improvements that are to be completed in that area. In order to accomplish the vision, we find that it's often necessary to be able to construct smaller projects, and those projects can have some substantial... Actually, can substantially add to the quality of life, safety, aesthetics, and the individual character of each one of these areas. So, examples of those projects are things like additional lighting, enhanced landscaping, signage, entryway features, pole banners, crosswalks, street furniture, things of those nature. A couple of interesting things, or a couple of important things to note, is a neighborhood enhancement CIP was recommended by all the NACs and the CRA board, and approved by this board in the CIP process for fiscal year 2020, that these projects would be, as always, like other CRA projects, tracked and monitored by OMB, and that this amendment pretty much closes the official loop in complying with Florida statute in adding neighborhood enhancement projects to each community redevelopment plan. So, I would move that the board accept the agency's recommendation and approve a resolution to include neighborhood enhancement projects in each community redevelopment area's community redevelopment plan, and that ends my very long and complex...
End of presentation.
Move approval.
Second, respect.
Yes, ma'am.
Elizabeth Lenahan County Attorney's Office, will just make sure you call for public comment, please.
Okay. Say it again?
You want to do that first, ask for a public comment?
Sure, do we have any public comment? We see no public comment. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So, Susan, just for clarity, so, any budgetary item whatsoever of these smaller projects that are specific to each of the neighborhoods, they will come to us in the CIP that we adopt as our countywide CIP?
So, generally, Commissioner, we look to do these types of projects with a larger project, so if we have a capital project, and I'll use Map Road as a good example...
Good for you.
We...Street furniture is already included in that, lighting is already included in that. These projects are things that, and here's an example of a good neighborhood enhancement project in Port Salerno, the signage that says "Welcome to Port Salerno" is looking pretty grim, so the community wants to do that.
And so, who has the approval of the dollars spent on that?
So, the CIP actually has been approved by all of you, and the NAC generally will recommend what they like to see in those particular lines. They look at about $50,000.
Okay, but, and I'm sorry, I keep asking questions I already know...
Not answering.
...to answer two, but the county commission ultimately has the say over spending those dollars, correct?
Correct.
We haven't turned that over to the CRA or to the NAC?
No, that CIP was approved by this commission.
Okay, just in years past, there was a lot of discussion about who had the authority, who had the ability to spend CRA funds, and it never left the ability or the control of the county commission through their CIP process or through a public hearing.
No, sir, they make their recommendations, and then it comes to you.
Thank you very much.
I can just clarify that.
Okay, we have a motion.
I have several pages.
Okay, you have your light on. Do you want to...Somebody want to give me a second?
Yes.
I did.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hurd, seconded by Commissioner Smith, apparently. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to Department Quasi Judicial Number One, request approval for the Fourth Amendment to the Old Trail PUD zoning agreement 0037-002, including a revised master plan, or master and final site plan, and PAMP, Mr. Peter Walden. This is a quasi judicial hearing. Do we have any ex parte communications, Mr. Smith?
If I have them, they're filed.
Commissioner Heatherington.
If any, they've been filed.
If I have any that have been filed, Mr. Campy?
I have none.
Commissioner Hurd?
I have none, and that's been filed.
Okay. If anybody's offering testimony, please stand and be sworn in. That's y'all back there, too.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, are there any receipts to be turned in?
No, sir, none required.
Okay, have you submitted a copy of the agenda item and your work history?
I have.
All right, are there any intervenors?
No, sir.
Okay, proceed, Mr. Walden.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a request by Jonathan's Landing Golf Club to request approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Old Trail PUD zoning agreement, including revised master and final site plan, and Preserve Area Management Plan. The existing golf course and 74 lot residential development is situated on an approximate 442-acre parcel, located approximately one mile west of Florida's Turnpike, and is accessed via Indian Town Road in Jupiter. Included with this application is a request for a certificate of public facilities exemption. The Old Trail PUD was originally approved in 1986 and planted in 1987. There are two golf courses within the Old Trail PUD. Both golf courses were planned to be revised and reconfigured by Jonathan's Landing Golf Club. The first course, on the southern portion of the development, was able to be remodeled with an excavation and fill permit. The applicant intends to reconfigure and update the northern course within the development to a greater extent than the southern course. However, according to the recorded plat, all of the lakes are platted as individual tracks. If changes were implemented that reconfigured the lake areas, the site would be inconsistent with the plat and the existing preliminary development plan. Therefore, the applicant submitted revised master and final site plan as part of the Fourth Amendment to the PUD zoning agreement in order to create the open space tracks that could accommodate future changes. The southern course is now complete, and all environmental issues, including recent wetland delineations and revised preserve areas resulting in an additional seven and a half acres of protected areas, have been worked into the new Preserve Area Management Plan, or PAMP. With the revised site plan and plat, modifications to the northern course will be possible while remaining in compliance with the proposed plans. There is no vertical construction or impervious improvements proposed with the revised master and final site plan. The proposed Fourth Amendment to the PUD zoning agreement will replace the preliminary development plan with revised master and final site plan and add a PAMP that documents the updated preserve areas and wetland boundaries. Development review staff have found the application to be in compliance with all applicable regulations and the comprehensive plan, and therefore... Move that. Therefore, move that the board receive and file the agenda item and its attachments, including the staff report, as Exhibit One, and move that the board approve the request for the Fourth Amendment to the Old Trail PUD zoning agreement, including the revised master and final site plan and PAMP. That concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, is there applicant to presentation, or no? Yes, no?
I don't think they have a presentation, but they're here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Any public...
Second.
Any public comment? Seeing none. Commissioner Heather...
No, I was just going to move approval.
Can't hear you.
I'll second it.
What?
I was just going to move approval.
Oh, how about a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom. I thought this wasn't for this golf course, no.
Yeah, this is a different...
This is a different golf course.
Okay.
Yep.
It's a golf course, but it's not that one.
Yeah, well, there you go. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campy, seconded by, right?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner...
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation of approval.
See, she can't even hear you down there.
I was trying to be discreet.
Everybody's mumbling.
I know. I think it might have something to do with...
Not done.
Anyway.
It's like student council up here.
Motion by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have another quasi judicial, number two, request approval for Old Trail PUD replat Mr. Walden, this is a quasi judicial hearing. Does anybody have any ex parte? Mr. Smith?
If I do, they're filed.
If any, they've been filed.
If I have any, they've been filed.
I don't have any.
None filed.
All right. Anybody offering testimony, please stand and be sworn in. Again.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, any return receipts to be turned in?
No, sir, none required.
Any present...or, any agenda item been turned in in your work history?
Yes, it has.
Been through that? Are there any interveners?
No, sir.
All right, take it away.
Thank you. Let me get to the... Okay, thank you, Chairman, once again. Peter Walden with the Growth Management Department. Jonathan's Landing Golf Club requests approval of a replat of the Old Trail PUD. The Old Trail PUD was originally approved in 1986 and planted in 1987. There are two golf courses within the Old Trail PUD. As stated, within the previous agenda item, revisions were sought for the golf courses, and the existing preliminary development plan and plat needed to be updated to allow for those changes. There are no proposed infrastructure improvements that require bonding contracts to complete or surety, and the proposed replat of Old Trail is consistent with the approved master and final site plan and is in compliance with all applicable regulations.
Can you leave that for a second? I wasn't done reading it.
If you'd like, I can read it for you.
Please, no.
All right. With that, staff moves that the board receive and file the agenda item and all its attachments, including the staff report, as Exhibit One, and move that the board approve the request for the Old Trail PUD replat number one. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, applicant? Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the board.
Move staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hurd, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to let my horse down to Old Trail. I thought Jonathan Landing was in Palm Beach County.
It is.
Department One, Office of Management and Budget Items Which Require Board Approval. Four items. Ms. Manning.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jennifer Manning, OMB Director. I'm going to get to my little box. I guess Peter made it really small. Okay, the first item on my agenda is permission to accept the local planning agency grant funding from FDOT to resurface St. Wissy Boulevard from Indian Street to East Ocean Boulevard. It's estimated that the grant will cover $756,408. The total project cost is estimated at $768,408. The second item is a request from Public Works Department to transfer $232,000 from the general fund reserves for the ongoing Loesum project, which is the Lake Okeechobee System Operations Manual, and they need their outside consultants that are working on the NEPA, and they would like funds from the general fund. NIPA, and they would like funds from the general fund.
Pause.
It's on three.
Huh?
It's on this one.
Okay.
The third item, Utilities Department is requesting a transfer from reserve from their capital facility funds reserve for the Hideaway Water Assessment Project, which is in CIP, and the cost is, it's going to be a little more.
Okay, pause there for a minute. Commissioner Hurt?
Yeah, the Hideaway Isles water assessment will be internally funded by the Utilities Department?
Yes.
So, is, is that going to be assessable, or the utility department is going to pay
I'm sure they'll have to, I mean, they'll have to pay interest for the assessment itself. They're just funding it through their CFCs.
It's an assessment, Commissioner?
Okay.
Yeah.
Good enough.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. The final item is a fiscal policy which the board is required to update annually. The last fiscal policy was updated in 2019, in August. This fiscal policy has a few minor changes, a little bit to the legal reimbursement and the fund balance for clarification purposes. And then there was also a request to set aside reserves, a three-month reserve for tourism, which is based on the promotional revenues and tourism revenues.
Good check.
Commissioner Hurt?
Yes, I would like to separate out one, two, and three, and separate out four, because I would like to vote against four because of my objections to the reimbursement for legal cost policy changes. So, move approval of items one, two, and three.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by-
Mr. Chair, before you continue, Commissioner Heatherington? Wasn't this on this item?
That's on Department number two.
Oh, okay.
Apologies. Departmental number two.
That's, that's Christie's item, not this one. Okay, we-
Move approval of items one, two, and three.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner, or Commissioner Hurt, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor for items one, two, and three? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move approval of the remaining item.
Second, sorry.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Heatherington. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one. Commissioner Hurt dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Department two, contracts that meet the threshold for board approval, $1 million or greater. Mr. Christie Brotherton. I was trying to actually this morning get you to do all of your stuff so you didn't have to come back.
Great.
Didn't work.
See, I told you about this morning.
Oh, man.
Blown that out.
Good afternoon, Christie Brotherton, purchasing manager. Do you want me to separate these out, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, can we separate out item number one? I'm going to be abstaining. I'm an employee of Ferrera, and although they were not recommended for award, they did bid on the project, so I'll be abstaining, and I've submitted my Form 8B.
Okay, Christie, just do the first one, and then we'll pause from there.
Sure. Okay, the first item up for consideration is our Old Palm City Neighborhood Restoration Project. Staff is recommending that the board award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which is Heavy Civil Incorporated, in the amount of $1,165,556.55. And move that the board authorize the county administrator or designate to execute any and all documents related to this request.
Motion to approve. Thank you. Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Commissioner Heatherington?
Abstaining.
What do you call it?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Sorry.
Okay, the second item we have is the CR 609 Guard Rail Improvements Project. This is a federally funded grant project through DOT. Staff is recommending that the board award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder of Ranger Construction in the amount of $2,691,183.65. And we are requesting that the board authorize that the county administrator or designate execute any and all documents related to this request. The last contract for consideration is our Murphy Road Bridge Replacement Project. This is also a DOT grant-funded project. Staff is recommending that the board award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Conan Graham Incorporated, in the amount of $4,125,831.80. And move that the board authorize the county administrator or designate to execute any and all documents related to this request.
You should take the 80 cents off.
Motion to accept. A lot of exciting things happening in District Five.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Smith for item two and three. All in favor?
Aye.
Somebody wants to say something?
May I?
Mr. Zama, sure.
George Zama, Capital Projects Administrator. I just want to give a special thanks to staff member Ken McLaughlin, who works with me. As you may or may not be aware, we negotiated an extra $700,000 of federal funds towards this project, so also special thanks to Florida Department of Transportation, District Four, Leslie Weatherall, Sabrina Aubrey, and Maya Williams for their contribution.
All right, all right, thanks.
Nice job.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And our last item of the day, Department Three, Sailfish Sands Golf Course Presentation. Mr. Bate, you have three and a half minutes.
Oh, we have a security alert. Good afternoon, and hopefully we save the best for last. My name is Kevin Abate, I'm the Parks Director, and today I'm bringing back a presentation upon the board's request in August for an update on the golf course, including change orders and current expenses. And if we look way back in January 2016, before COVID-19, that beautiful day, we're out in Sailfish Sands on our ground breaking, and since then, we've come a long way. Since then, and we'll call it Phase One of the new nine-hole course, it is a reversible nine-hole course, the only one in Florida, which has five Ts per hole, and those Ts are designed for kids and families, and also acts as a regulation nine golf course. It's, the driving range we have constructed is 13 acres. We have on order now 75 new carts with GPS, short game facility, concrete screenings, new on-course restrooms, repainting the cart barn, typical greens, new landscaping, some STA abilities to reuse water from Willoughby Creek. We removed all the invasives throughout the course, and the course is a rotating nine with, and we're also, are going to be, which I'll show you later in the presentation, the interactive targets with the driving range and golf ball attration technology. Phase One, we did delay some items for the golf course. We did defer the pro shop until next year. It is designed, and we'll be using some of our fixed asset replacement dollars we currently have on reserve. The pro shop, we didn't move it to save money, and we, that provided that the driving range and clubhouse were closer to St. Lucie Boulevard for a greater roadside appeal. And then we also deferred the pathways for the Golden Blue course until November, which is coming up next month, and we expect those pathways to be constructed and completed in early 2021. We deferred the Golden Blue exotic removal and the Golden Blue greens, Ts and fairways into the out years of our CIP program, and that was a result of a budget reduction for this year. So some of our challenges led to our change orders, and we have our earliest 1900 infrastructure, failing wells, critical water supply shortages, collapsed asbestos concrete irrigation water lines, extensive invasive removal, drainage issues, septic tank challenges, COVID-19 contractor delays, and two 100-year rainstorms events that actually helped us define our golf course design a little bit further. This led to, those things led to some of the change orders that were all within the 10% threshold of the contract of 2.286 million. We took out change order number eight. We did have a few other expenses for signage and completion of our golf course restroom construction from septic to sewer. And our final, not, it's not the exact number, but our final expense summary for this golf course Phase One is 2.6 million, and the source of the funds are capital project loan proceeds. This is what we constructed and saw completely done on all three courses, the Gold, the Blue, and the new course, the new reversible nine, septic to sewer, ice machines, chill fountains. I think the golfers will be extremely happy. They're, they're actually golfing now in the Golden Blue. This is a quick aerial from April through September of the progression of the, of the, of the, of the course. Into May, you see the driving range on the top. And July, the driving range just got seeded there in July, August, September. And that's what the driving range looked like before, and that's what it looks like today. So, big improvement. One of the other things we're doing for our experience for the driving range is some, what we call the mobile range technology. It's quite simple. As a user of the golf course, you simply have to just have a cell phone, download the app, the currently, this is out to bid, so this is just an example of one of the products that are out there, and the guest only has to purchase a bucket of balls, and if this plays, that'll be great. If it doesn't, I'll just tell them more about what a mobile range is, so I don't think it's going to play, which is fine. So, so the range estimate, right now, we collect about just under $50,000 a year for 5,000 buckets of balls each year. We expect to triple that number to some extent, or probably more. And the mobile range, what it does, the golfer will come out, it'll track all of their data, the speed of their ball, the distance, all the, all the data that golfers would love to have, but can only have in an indoor simulated range. So this will be a public range to allow the golfers to come in and improve their swing through technology, and it's a lease of equipment that's within our budget right now, so we won't own anything, but we certainly will have the only mobile range south of Jacksonville from what I understand. The next one is our Glow Gear Range. This is an after-hours, you know, when it gets dark till about 9:00, 9:30. These are targets that are on the range. This is another revenue opportunity to get clubs in the hands of kids and families in the evening hours where they hit a UV painted real golf ball on the range to provide, to maximize the revenue opportunity on this driving range, which is 13 acres. And the two programs between the golf ball tracing technology and the Glow Gear Range, combined income will go from 40 to just about 250,000 a year, and I'm using some pretty conservative numbers, but we are trying to provide a better experience at the golf course on our investment. Some of the things we've done from the above and beyond environmental sustainability, we did reduce the irrigation by 30%. We showcased the natural sand dune, removed invasive plants, use of native plants, slash pines, palm trees, oaks, and native ornamental grasses. We were able to have, we were really lucky, believe it or not, it, it didn't rain early in the spring for a very long time. Of course, now we have plenty of water at the golf course, and we were able to reroute and divert some of the water from the Willoughby Creek STA to help us with our grow-in period, which takes probably 10 times the amount of water from seed to, from sod to the ground. And so it was a good thing for us to work along with Ecosystems Division to get that done. And our goal is to have Sailfish Sands Golf Course open as newly branded in January 2021. Phase Two is our parking lot, cart pass, lighting, landscaping renovations, and a new car pass. As you can see on the site plan above you, there, we have a development order to do it, and the bids just closed last week, and we will be taking this project, which includes increasing our parking spaces, landscaping, drainage, lights, drop-off entrance, golf, golf, golf cart parking near the range, low-level lane, range lights, a lift station addition for the new clubhouse, new irrigation, and then, of course, Capital Projects is working on right now, which is in a bid preparation phase, the St. Lucie Boulevard traffic comment alongside of this project, which includes, you see what's in front of you, the striping, the pavers, stormwater additions, modifications, medias, sodding, and curbing. So that's a nice thing to do at the same time before the clubhouse would be built. That estimate we had was 1.229,646 million. The bid on last week was 1.214. We are currently going through the vetting process of the vendor, and if all goes well, we'll be bringing that to the board next board meeting. Phase Three is the clubhouse and hitting bays, which are currently approaching or at 100% design. The hitting bays and clubhouse include a Florida vernacular design, full-service dining and bar, 20 climate-controlled hitting bays with golf ball tracing technology, an event room overlooking the range, full-service bar and kitchen. There's some tentative hours, and one of the things that we'll probably do is, if this is approved, we'll begin the process of looking for a food, beverage, and liquor provider, if you will. Our goal is to outsource the complex things, that's been our model from day one, like the landscape maintenance program, and keep the green. So our goal here is to keep the driving range revenue, and of course, the rent, the revenue from the hitting bays. But all in, as you'll see later in the presentation, this is a 2.7 million dollar revenue program with the hitting bays, and I think that will provide some opportunities for those in the private sector that wish to embark upon a project like this with us. What is the clubhouse, what is the date of the clubhouse? The clubhouse is about 5,500 square feet, excluding the pergola and the covered entry. The hitting bays are about 3,600 on the first floor and 4,400 on the second floor. This is the schematic design of the actual hitting bays. On the top, you'll see there's 10 bays per floor, there's 60 seats per floor, two floors, or 20 bays. We have inside restrooms, and we have exterior restrooms for the restroom and outside. Those are for the golfers that arrive early in the morning. We can see it about 21 at the bar and 66 around the dining area, and we have a full kitchen and storage, a full menu program, and of course, we have an event room for 24 that over, that also overlooks the driving range. And I'll show you some photos of the renderings. This is the pergola on the outside and the restrooms, which are just probably about 200 feet from the pro shop where they pay for golf. This is the driving range looking at the hitting bays and at the event room. This is looking out from one of the hitting bays. Each of the hitting bays is about 10 by 10, fully furnished with televisions and a couch, and you get full service from the bay caddies that serve you your food and drink. This is the inside of the clubhouse, and we focused on high ceilings and lots of windows and open space, as you can see. There's the bar, looking out at the range. That's fully designed inside and out. Just a couple of quick slides on what's happened in the industry of golf. Connected ranges are here to stay. Mobile apps connecting the grids of bays and hitting bays and sensors are, are trending. Wirelessly tracking golf balls to their landing spot and calculating shot data are something that golfers will use to improve their skills and gaming, gaming, games that feature golfers and non-golfers that bring families and, and kids, you know, in a relaxed way together to these venues is, is what's been trending across the country. Like, for instance, Augusta National Topgolf is now concepting a new facility, a smaller venue, a 10-bay, single-story, with the same technology that we are embarking upon to provide the same game and experience, games, food, beverage, and entertainment for golfers and non-golfers alike. And what we're seeing is that some of these larger corporations are maybe taking a new fresh look at not having 90, 100-bay hitting facilities for the right market size. So what this does, what we're proposing for this project is for Sailfish Sands is that you can have all of those experiences at the course and, and have the bays on the course at the driving range and also at the course. We believe that this facility is for all generations, the, between the Golden Blue, which is PGA Championship 18, the reversible nine, which really caters to a straight-up easy golf with seniors, non-complex, straight-to-weight Ts for, for a quicker game experience, adding in the, the, the driving range for the different experiences, and for instance, you know, both my boys between Generation Z, five and 24, you know, their first experience with golf was probably in a video game, and so, and then, of course, our baby boomers who are out there now have the traditional golf approach. So it does, it does tap into all the different generations. Our, kind of our focus here is to build a, a first-class teaching facility, also partner with our relationship between the First Tree of the Treasure Coast, with their great program that they have to teach kids that have probably never seen a golf ball before, and their nine core values programs and healthy habits. And our focus is to, if we do a really good job here of getting golf clubs in the hands of kids and families and growing the sport as a public affordable facility, we believe that we can help the golf courses that are surrounding us to be very, very successful because golf on itself, on its, on its surface is flat. I know this year is probably a good year for golf because of COVID-19, but historically before that has been flat at best, and so we'd rather be a place where you get your first experience and then- And so, we'd rather be a place where you get your first experience, and then, as you get older, start experiencing golf at other facilities. This is a quick slide on a side-by-side comparison, all square foot being equal. If we were to just build a clubhouse and then adding the hitting bays on a clubhouse, the 20 hitting bays. So, you'll see that the revenue is quite different in my conversations with the National Golf Foundation. The best that will ever do for a round of golf is $6.30. That's the national average. We do about 50,000 rounds of golf, golf a year, and we call a nine-hole golf, a nine-hole round, a round of golf, not necessarily 18. But at the end of the day, a clubhouse at a golf course, just about anywhere you go, is a service provider, and that service provider doesn't necessarily make money. And the intention of this slide in itself, if you go down to the bottom, you'll see the budgeted subsidy right now for the golf course at 763. Our focus is that we want to eliminate that subsidy, and by just merely adding the hitting bays on this facility, on the back of this clubhouse, not only will eliminate your subsidy, but also put some revenue into the course. And of course, the net on that is, you know, you eliminate the 763, and you make just over 100,000. So, you're north, you're right around plus 900,000. And while we could still just build a clubhouse, that's perfectly fine, because that's what the community wanted. My vision for this project was to have a golf course for the next 30-plus years and to look into the future, as we know our golfers are aging out, generation, the later generations, and we know that the millennials and Z's are the up-and-comers. So, that's the impetus for this presentation and the change that I'm proposing. The final slide is a summary of everything that I've talked about. We did start with 5.5 millions, $5.5 million in capital project loan proceeds. Phase one, as I said earlier, is complete. We're finishing up our walkthrough. It's at 2.6 million. The bid that just came back in for the parking lot and landscaping is at 1.2. The clubhouse and hitting bays, this is a first-floor construction, actual construction analysis and cost, is at 3.479 million. And then, phase three, we added in some change orders, permits, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment for FFNE, and support expenses at 742. So, this project is an $8 million project all-in. With the funds that we have remaining, we still have a shortfall of 2.592,515 million. That's without contingency. And the premise of this presentation is to, for the board item, is to ask for us to seek appropriate funding strategy to complete the bid process and construction of the 100% design clubhouse and hidden bays, not to exceed $3 million. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Commissioner Hetherton.
That was 3 minutes and 59 seconds.
Yeah, you're a little bit longer.
I just had a couple of questions, and I had asked you this, but I'm not clear. So, the driving range is ready to be open, and then, the tracing technology, you would put that RFP out, and then, that could be implemented immediately on the driving range, the way it sits now? It does not have to wait until a clubhouse or the hitting bays?
That is correct. So, currently, the range is constructed. The bid that just got closed would include the power supply, if you need to connect to the pro shop. It also includes lights in there and sidewalks that are behind the range. But the, right now, the golf ball tracing technology, that is currently out to bid. It closes next week sometime, and then, we have a selection committee that will choose the final product. And then, our goal is to implement that as soon as we select a vendor and get them going. And, you know, I've had past conversations over the last couple of years, and it's probably gonna take them a few months to put stuff like that in. So, our goal is early '21 as well, January. That would be my push, but that would be our goal. So, that, we do not have to wait for the clubhouse for that technology to be used.
So, then, the goal would be, you know, when hitting, the hitting bays are constructed, to use that same technology, or would that be something completely?
Correct. So, we would use the same technology. We put out the RFP that allowed us to have the bids split into the driving range only for the mobile application, and of course, the, what I call virtual golf for the clubhouse. So, we'll get a price, or a lease price for that equipment for the mobile range, and then, a separate one that would take effect upon completion of the clubhouse construction, take effect when that's done as well. So, we split it out, and we, of course, would want one company to have both products.
So, and because that's a lease, then we're not allocating that in this budget? Because?
Yeah. So, from my understanding, from the vendors I've talked to over the past few years, is that they provide all the product. It's a lease for us. There's no upfront cost to the county. There's a simple lease cost per bay or per foot on the driving range. And so, we would use our revenue to offset that. But from my, also talking with operators around the US that have this technology, it's well worth it.
And then, you had mentioned RFP for, I think that you were referring to the clubhouse. So, would they run, this RFP that you're talking about, someone to run, I assume, to be the service provider?
So, my goal would be to formulate an RFP that would allow someone to operate the food, beverage program, and the alcohol that goes with it, because it's a full bar with full liquor, eliminate that headache from us. And to come up, obviously, that's a bid, a proposal. And so, and then, we'd have some sort of, you know, minimum in there, percentage of revenue that we'd want to see from that. But our goal is to keep the revenue on the hitting bays. You know, it's our facility, we own and operate it, but I believe there would be plenty of folks out there that would love the opportunity to have a $1.7 million revenue program for food, beverage, and alcohol, and then, we focus on keeping what I call the greens fees.
So, the hitting bays, then, would be separated from the food and beverage?
They're all one, they're gonna service them, because essentially, a hitting bay is a dining room table, but there is a way where we can divert those funds collected to the county. We're working on a bid right now for point-of-sale, and we could require that the vendor use our point-of-sale, and what we collect would go to the county, and what they collect would go to them. So, there's probably a way of doing that, and that would probably require that in the bid.
Okay, thanks. And then, the blue and gold, when we originally, it's been quite a long time since we discussed it, were we intending on originally doing the blue and gold in the first part, or was that always planned to be phased?
We did, we wanted to phase some of it, but it was the intention to try to do it all. But obviously, when you, we probably could have done, if we didn't do the clubhouse, we probably could have done the gold and blue golf course. But once we got into the bidding for the new course, my focus was to get that done first, and the parking lot, which were the two top priorities. We really had an ancient golf course, and we had an ancient parking lot, and we don't even know what we're gonna discover in the parking lot. But the goal and the focus was to get, to take care of what's in front of us now. The gold and blue course is in good shape. Does it need the invasives removed? Absolutely. And the exotics removed? Absolutely. Does the, do the greens need to be replaced? They do. Is it imminent and right now? No, but I think it should be phased. But yes, we did initially want to do that, but obviously, funding is an issue.
And then, finally, I think the St. Lucy Boulevard traffic calming, you mentioned that's going out to bid. So, do we have, and maybe that's a question for George?
That's a George question.
When do we expect that to start construction, and when do we expect that to be completed?
Yeah, George Zama, Capital Projects Administrator. So, we intended for the project to be under the continuing services threshold. Unfortunately, it did exceed the threshold. So, we do have bid documents prepared, and we will be sending it to the purchasing division for bid solicitation within the next few weeks. So, you give another month of bidding and a couple of weeks of procurement, you're about six to eight weeks.
Would it start construction?
Correct.
Okay. And then, how long of a project is that?
It's probably around a 60 to 90-day project. We do have to consider there is irrigation and landscaping, not just roadwork.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hurd.
Yeah. For those residents who are questioning our strategy here, it's good to recognize some of the history, and that is that Martin County committed to having a publicly-owned golf course many, many years ago, and we, commissioners, also committed to that. And we didn't use to manage it ourselves. We had a board of private citizens who managed the golf course and the clubhouse, and they neglected a lot of the maintenance responsibilities of both, and were losing money, things needed to be done. They turned it over to the county, and the county started assessing what could be done, what needed to be done in order to uphold our commitment to having a golf course. So, we determined first that the golf club, golf house, the clubhouse, was inadequate for the future. We were told that the repairs would be really expensive, it was wrong-sized, and so, the commission majority made a decision to demolish the clubhouse. And we made also a decision to manage the golf course, which we did, and we did a fine job of it. But we also were losing money like crazy, because golf usage is cratering in the United States, and we taxpayers were having to heavily subsidize the golf course, and we knew that that was a trajectory that was not going to change. It was just going to keep getting worse. So, we made the decision to eliminate nine holes of play and to redesign nine holes of play, and to take a look at the whole property and see what could be done, with always an eye upon sustainability. And we also knew that in order for this project to remain viable for the next 30 years, that we were going to have to do something to attract new users, to attract new golfers. And young people don't play golf. So, Mr. Abate did a lot of wide-ranging research and found out that virtual golf and video games and that sort of things were a perfect introduction for young people to the game of golf. So, these changes that we are proposing, that he's proposing, are necessary to modernize this facility, and also to, this is an extraordinarily valuable public asset, and we need to make the best use of that asset that we can. And the way to make the best use of that asset is to attract as many residents to use it as possible. And that means making some changes to attract young people. And I think that it's going to be a cutting-edge course, and I think that the clubhouse, while many may question our business plan, I think that it looks to me like it's a solid one. It looks to me like it could be viable, and it could keep us from having the taxpayers to have to subsidize this community asset for the next 30 years. So, I just wanted people to understand the commitment that we have and the commitment that I have in out-years to make sure that this continues to be a really well-utilized public resource.
All right. That was wonderful. You summed that, my thoughts up, too. Do we have any other comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Smith.
I agree with everything that Sarah just said. I think the only other piece to how we got here and how much appreciative we were in the back years when we were trying to get to where we are today, we really did engage the community, in the golfing community, to try to help us understand what they both would tolerate and also what they wanted. And it was, I think, even though we've been probably through 20 iterations over seven, eight years or so, those very early engagements with the community, I think specifically the golfing community, were hugely important. They told us really what would set the stage for where we are today. The whole technology side of this and what Kevin and his team and others have brought to it, I don't think was envisioned as part of that early communication, but I think the conversation that affordable was important, to really keep the general character and the play historically accurate to where this course came from, I think is super important and what they have achieved. One of the things that's still just drop-dead amazes me is how clever our staff is as a general rule. Taking the water quality project that we did with Willoughby Creek and combining that into the golf course, the day I took the tour out there, it hadn't really dawned on me exactly how all that would come together, but the benefit to the water use and to the ability to interconnect it to all of our stormwater management ponds out there into the irrigation system, I think was brilliant, while peeling off probably not-so-good water and reprocessing it again into the golf course was just a home run. And I think all the iterations that have worked through to get us to where we are have been absolutely fantastic. So, there were a lot of people involved, and not one set or a group of people really 100% owned this thing, but the bonus was taking all of that input, all these years, has turned into something really spectacular. And I congratulate you and your staff, Kevin, for really taking a business plan and turning it into something that I think will carry us into the future for years to come. So, thank you. Did I second it already?
There wasn't a motion, was there?
I can't, I'm going deaf, I can't hear you. What did you say?
Sarah, did you move approval?
No, but I will.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, but we have a-
We have approval of staff's recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Pine, you're up. I think I'm getting deffer as the day goes on, I'm not sure.
It's like when you choose one parent, turns out the kids-
Yeah. Well, maybe that's it, yeah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Tom Pine, I've been a Martin County resident for over 45 years. I moved to Martin County in the early '70s, and by the mid-'90s, County Commission hired an airport director with the intent, with the purpose of expanding runway 1230, no matter what. And he accomplished that. He came before the County Commission and lied to their face, and they accepted it, and they expanded 1230. I lived on East 18th Street. I lived there several years, sucking in the poisoned fumes from the jets, before the county finally bought us out, because they couldn't shut us up. They tried hard. The couple streets were supposed to be bought out, not just mine. Mine's the only one that survived. Two of my neighbors died of bronch and brain cancer, closely correlated to jet fuel. Now, we hire a parts and recreation director from Broward County. It seems his intent was to, he was, no, I take that back. He was hired with the express reason to make everything bigger and better, bigger and better, bigger and better, in Martin County. And this golf course is one of them. Just like the community pool I supported in the beginning, I did support the community golf course. Now, it's drone into a monster. It's gonna be another boondoggle, just like the water park. Golf has been declining for over a decade. I don't feel it's Martin County's taxpayers' responsibility to revitalize golf. I keep hearing how the community, that's what the community wanted, this is what the community did, this is what the community wants. Well, I think for an expenditure of this size, on a boondoggle of this magnitude, that the taxpayers should vote on this project, since the community wants it so bad, it should be a resounding vote for you. But I don't believe the community supports this kind of action. We want a public golf course, not the monster you're bringing to us. Thank you for your time, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Pine. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hurd, seconded by Commissioner Smith.
Can you clarify what staff's recommendation was? Sorry, don't have it.
It says for the board, that move that the board authorized that staff seek an appropriate funding strategy to complete the bid process and construction of the 100% design clubhouse and hitting bays at a cost not to exceed $3 million.
So, what does an appropriate funding strategy entail? Because we're looking for $3 million, and that, is that coming back to us?
We need to-
Where I feel a little uncertain is, in order to get this, we're gonna have to sacrifice something.
Yes, ma'am.
So, what is that? Sacrifice is what I want to know, and where are the dollars coming from?
Well, that's a great question. So, in my review of various areas of the budget that we could possibly tap into that would not impact any other projects today, as you know- know, we did an early separation program with our employees. We had over 30 individuals take that program. And the, between what those individuals were earning and what we would bring somebody in at, at a minimum salary, there's almost $600,000 there, and I have not even included fringes and benefits. So I would look to tap into that first. We also received FEMA reimbursement on Matthew and Irma that we were not anticipating. That was over $1 million, I think it was 1.2. So I was going to look at that to make sure that we could possibly utilize that toward it. And then we also have within our capital improvement fund, as you know, we always put a contingency in for each of those projects that are being constructed. We've been seeing some of our bids coming in lower than what we had budgeted. And then we also have been able to, George has done a phenomenal job keeping the contractors in check. So we're able to bring those projects in either at budget or under budget, which again then frees up some capital funding opportunities. So we were going to look at all those funds. We're just now finishing our year-end process. So what happens is the clerk closes our books through September of last year, I mean of this year, so September 30th of 2020, our books are closed. We're going through the process of closing purchase orders that were not necessary. We're looking at all of our revenues. We just got our August sales tax revenues in, and thankfully, they were about what we would anticipate this time of year. So we anticipate that our revenues will be coming in fairly close to what we had anticipated. So we're looking at all those things right now because we're in the middle of year-end. And so I plan to, again, identify this $3 million without having to hit reserves or sacrifice projects that you've already approved.
So I think the golf course will always have, the golf course itself, and just that's the business of golf, will always have a subsidy. But the innovative technology, I think, is fabulous. The course, you know, it will definitely attract new golfers. And that might offset some of the-
It will.
As far as capital projects coming in under bid, and then us allocating it to the golf course, I'm not really in favor. I think that should go to the next road or drainage project.
Okay.
But it's, I just, I look at it like, well, I think, I do believe the improvements are going to bring in revenue. But it's like when someone says that, I'm going to sell my house, should I do a kitchen remodel in order, you know, to make more money when I sell my house? But you're going to have to sacrifice something to implement those projects. And I just would like really to know what I'm sacrificing. That's all.
Yes, ma'am. Well, our intent is to not sacrifice anything. I mean, as you know, when we'll be doing our capital CIP in April of next year, we work with Mr. Zarma and Mr. Gordon and all the departments so that we can make sure that the revenues that they're utilizing in their CIP are appropriate. And then we assess what's the appropriate use of those funds, how much of those funds they have. We do have some, you know, like I said, some ability because the contingencies aren't always utilized. And normally, contingency is set about 10%. So when you think of the, how many different projects we have, now granted, some of those funds are restricted. So we can't use, for instance, utilities monies, as you know, on a road, on a general road project, et cetera. So that's why we want to be able to take the time to look at those revenues that we've received, look at the expenditures that we made through the end of September 2020, and then identify where we could utilize those funds, recognizing that we are anticipating getting some revenues in. Mr. Abate had budgeted already some anticipation of those fees already from the driving range and playing golf and the reverse nine, all that. So we've already put that into the budget. So it's not like those funds are going to be additional unless he starts doing exceptionally well, and we start receiving more revenues than we expected.
Which we all hope.
Which we hope.
Commissioner Smith?
So for all intents and purposes, we're not going to impact the existing CIP. And in April, we will be adopting our new CIP, and it'll be up to the five of us to determine the priorities of the new CIP moving into 2022.
Yes, sir.
And we're not going to impact anything from 2021.
Looking at the various things that I've looked at to see-
That's fine. I mean, that's the plan. And that's what the motion anticipates, that we leave it up to you to figure out how to do that, and that we will, again, as a board collectively, plan for 2022 and our CIP coming up in April.
Yes, sir.
So, and does that include, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Sir?
Does that include the blue and gold? I saw somewhere that it moved out to '22, '23. In this $3 million, does that include the blue and gold?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
The CIP sheet for the blue and gold, you approved, when you approved the CIP, as Mr. Abate said, he had moved it out to '22 and '23. We looked at the funding sources. There's a large portion of the parks' capital that is Advalorm funded, but there is not a increase in the Advalorm that will be needed in those out-years. It's kind of smooths itself out, if you will. We try to do that intentionally so you're not seeing a spike one year, and then a decrease the next, and then a greater spike the next year. So those will be coming to you, is it '22, Kevin, or '23, or both?
Yeah. We initially had some of the Ts, fairways, and greens for the gold and blue for '21, but we pulled it out as a result of not, as a savings from the parks' CIP to the contribution of the overall CIP. It was about $800,000 total for parks. So we kind of backed off some of that. We kept the pathways in for the gold and blue, which we're doing. And so then we put it back in for '22. And we did that as a strategy to, you know, if we left it in, we wouldn't have, I would say, yes, it's going to get done. But '22 is October. And so if we're able to attack that in October, then it will kind of go right alongside of this clubhouse construction. We would never do a golf course renovation replacing the grasses, you know, now. It would be not ideal in the dormant season to do that. So we will try to look at the best time to do that. So we, so it is currently in the FY '22 and '23, because we have other priorities as well at the golf course, exotic removal or invasive removal.
Which is as important.
Which is as important. So really, what I thought was important, the gold and blue is an important asset. And the entire golf course is 304 acres. But I think really understanding the revenue potential of this new investment into the red and white, which is now the new nine, seeing how that performs, along with the driving range and the clubhouse, ultimately, you know, and then you can improve those assets later. It's, I think, trying to do it all at once was brave on my part, and I thought we could do it. And of course, when you get into construction numbers, which I'm not an expert at, you know, we just did the best that we could based on what we had. But the reality is, it's, you know, we'll get to the gold and blue next year, you know, next fiscal year, if you will, after October 1. And we'll get there with, and the most important thing for the gold and blue is the greens. We'd like to have tiff eagle greens around the house, meaning for all three courses. That's the most important thing. Most courses have that just replace their greens, see an uptick in the revenue at 10% right off the bat, because the greens are in good condition. So that would be our top priority, if anything. And we can get that done in a few short months before the next season.
So, and I apologize if everybody else is very clear. But, so did we adopt a CIP sheet, or we're going to adopt a CIP sheet?
So we have adopted a CIP sheet, and I believe-
Or the blue and-
Our discussions were to come back with a revised CIP sheet with a new funding strategy.
Which would carry it out to '22 and '23. How much is on that CIP, or how much is the blue and gold anticipated to cost?
I believe it's, to do the greens, the fairways, and the tee boxes, right around 900 total for all three of all 18, to do all at the same time. So, and those are pretty firm numbers because we bid it as an alternate with this project.
So then it's, the ask is really $3 million now, and then another million for the CIP?
Well, what we would do is come back with the CIP sheet for now to get this project going as we're wrapping up the design and permitting. Bring that back to you with Taren's funding strategy. And that will have the numbers for '22, '23, and '24, for the gold and blue and the rest of the course through the later years.
Okay. So you just clarified something. You're bringing back the funding strategy to us?
Correct.
With the CIP sheet.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's for, that's not for this. What we're approving today in the motion is to tell you to go ahead and find the money and get those out to bid and get into construction.
Well, that's not what, that's not what we said, but-
I know what he just said, but I, my, my understanding was what we're approving today is up to $3 million for you to go figure out how best to do that and go to bid. We're not going to come back in a month and a half from now and do this again, are we?
Well, our thought was that we would need to revise that existing CIP sheet. And on there, we would have that, and we would just put it on the O and B at the next meeting. But if the board wants to authorize us to go ahead and proceed, I'm happy to do that because we're not taking many money out of reserves.
Okay. Just, Ms. Chair, I'm sorry.
Good.
So if we were to do that today, and to Stacy's point, or to question, in April, we move ahead with the $3 million portion today, and we get them going. In April, that next blue and gold course improvement thing falling into a new CIP sheet or adding to the CIP sheet, the board may decide in April, Stacy, to say, that's my number one priority. I want that done in this fiscal year. And we may move other things out or forward if that's what the board decides to do. It doesn't necessarily mean it has to go '22, '23.
That's correct.
It's entirely up to us to decide what that CIP looks like and what the priorities of the CIP are, and what comes first, second, third, and 50th.
That's correct.
But it's Sarah's motion, so I mean, I, you know, I'll-
My motion was just staff's recommendation, read exactly like it was written in the agenda item.
So what's your anticipation? It comes back to approve the $3 million, or?
It'll, my understanding is that the CIP sheet will be revised, and it will come back, a revised CIP sheet will come back to us.
Okay. And that's the next agenda item? I mean, next commission meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
So you're second, still stands?
Here we are.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Hurd, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one. Commissioner Heatherington dissenting.
Thank you.
And with that, we are at the end of our meeting. I have to announce our next meetings, and I just realized that. Upcoming meetings, November 10th, regular meeting, November 17th, regular meeting, organizational meeting, and organizational meeting.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. What did I say?
When's the next meeting, the 10th?
The 10th of November.
And then 17th is a regular meeting in our reorg. And December 8th and 5th, 15th, are regular meetings. We are adjourned.
No, we're not.
I'm sorry, Ms.-
We're not?
Settle it down.
What?
Settle down. You got 505 public comments.
Oh, yeah, we do. Nobody cares.
You got Commissioner comments. I know Jim Gordon wanted to say something. I know George wanted to say something.
God, you want to drag this out to the end. Okay. Okay. Do we have any public comments? No public comments. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Smith?
Call us up.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes. Apparently, the last funding cycle for Tobacco-Free Florida, the board, it was a grant cycle for Quit Doc Foundation, who we're now very familiar with from earlier. The board wrote a letter in support of that program in Martin County for that grant cycle, and they are requesting that the board write another letter for this cycle for that grant.
Okay. I think that's a very good idea.
Sure. Okay, I'm good. Commissioner Hurd?
I'm good.
All right.
Wait. I have an official announcement to make. Like so many not-for-profits, Keep Martin Beautiful has been able to host an in-person annual fundraising event. Instead, this year, the Firefly Group came up with a creative and humorous way to host their environmental stewardship awards and celebrate the winners. I've been an emcee for this event in the past years, but this year, I got to serve as co-anchor with Stacy Rinnari, the host, of the event on a virtual platform as a live broadcast video. It's a little bit tongue-in-cheek and may remind you of a mashup between Saturday Night Live news skits, or Weekend Update, I guess they call it, and the Anchorman movie. I encourage everyone to tune in tomorrow at 6 o'clock by going to Keep Martin Beautiful's Facebook page. A good laugh and a preview of the full video can be seen at Keep Martin Beautiful's Facebook page with a 90-second trailer. With such negative news, this is really a great way to spread some good cheer and to celebrate all the groups and individuals who make Martin County a better place to live. The reason I bring this up is that throughout the year, there are individuals and organizations, including Martin County employees, City of Stewart employees, Indian Town employees, that have worked hard to keep our community clean and green, and we are celebrating them. So beyond the fundraising aspect, it is an opportunity to say thank you for the people that work so hard to make our environment clean and green. So I would encourage everyone to take a look at the Keep Martin Beautiful Facebook page. And I'm also going to be initiating with them in the spring, an opportunity for a big community cleanup and try to hit that again. Litter seems to be, I don't know if it's because of the pandemic, but litter seems to be on the uprise, and people are dumping and doing small littering. So I'm going to be using $5,000 of my district funds for an education and cleanup program that will start in District 5 and hopefully echo out to the rest of the county. Thank you very much.
With that-
And please go and vote.
With that, if we don't have any objections, we'll adjourn.